Great. Here we go. Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, July 26, 2023 meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. Thank you. On Wednesday, March 29, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act making appropriations for the fiscal year of 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meeting by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Act, Chapter 38, Section 20. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option to remove for remote meetings through March 21st, March 31st, 2025. Thank you, we are live and remote today. If you'll join me, I'm saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living, universal, for all.
Thank you. Call the role Commissioner Stady?
I am present.
Commissioner Collins?
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a full board today. Number three minutes, the open session meeting of July 19th, 2023 for approval.
I'm looking at my call, it looks like you had some comments.
I want to hold it.
Yeah.
I have some changes.
I do too, that's interesting.
Okay.
So I'd like to hold that, move we postpone till later.
Motion to hold the minutes to a later date of July 19th.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
We'll hold the minutes.
Do you want me to take those back to Phil to correct it? Or?
Yeah, I'm going to write my correction in and give it to you.
Perfect.
And that this, mine is more wordsmithing, but the intent of what I was saying isn't really captured accurately.
It's okay.
So I want to make your note.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number four. Robert Pearson, RSVP director for an update on our upcoming luncheon. Come on in, Robert.
Hello Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Robert.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you all, I bring you good cheer.
Like that.
As we are readying.
We need more people to bring us good cheer.
Well, that's why I'm here today. I'm here for good cheer because it's wonderful to be setting up for my ninth luncheon preparation.
Right.
With you. And it's going to be the first indoor preparation that we've had since before COVID. It's going to be at the end of Cott State that has super air conditioning. And we have 122 people signed up. We're going to squeeze in the other two somehow. It's 120 minimum, but you're not worried about it. We're going to start off this year with the Sheriff's Honor Guard, which we haven't had at luncheon since before COVID. And I have guarantees that the sheriff is going to be there on time to sing the National Anthem. I have people working on this for us. So the volunteer recognition gifts we're giving this year are a, an umbrella. This is, sure. People, people real, it's bad luck to open an umbrella indoors, but Joe, you may give it a go. The thing I like about this is
Goodness.
The thing I like about this is that it's two colored and it has both of our logos. It's the first item, we have both the Americor Seniors logo and the Norfolk County logo, which says Norfolk County RSVP underneath. And I'm not done. I actually have program books for each of you.
Thank you.
And we're going to talk about the, the order of, of activity shortly. But I'm also very happy to tell you that this year we have our very first ever 16-month RSVP walk calendar.
Oh, no, we're going way out.
Oh, really?
Way, too much, too much stuff.
I know, well, we have amazing volunteers and, you know, we show your gratitude for all of their work in the community.
You're the king of swag, Robert.
I am.
Really, you are, you are.
Thank you. The great thing about this calendar is it really highlights volunteers in action as well as the commissioners in action over the past year and a half. In, with, with little descriptions. So, very excited to give those. That was a brainstorm of one of our Dedham volunteers, Roberta Poff. She's been on me for a couple of years. Said, why don't we do that as a gift?
Wonderful thing.
And we are also in the gift bag. By the way, the gift bag is along the lines of this Americor Seniors tote bag. And we're also including a $25 grocery store gift card for all the volunteers as well this year. So we're very excited, we have the same caterer as last year for those of you that were able to make it. Hope to, hope to see all three of you there this year. For the order of, of activities, after I give my opening remarks, which is right after the sheriff singing, I would look to whatever combination of you, all of you ideally, that would like to get up and just share remarks to the group. You'll let me know, and if you want some help in crafting anything around RSVP, I could give you some ideas. And also usually two of you assist in the afternoon where I ask you to read the names of our presidential pin winners. So people who do, who get bronze, you know, that's 100 hours. Silver's 250, gold is 500 hours. And we have 35 recipients this year of those pins. So we have a week from tomorrow, it's coming up. If I could help or, you know, I'll, I'll catch some of you offline around your involvement for the presidential pins. So whether rain or shine, we're expecting a wonderful event.
Because we're indoors.
That's wonderful.
Okay.
And I will, I will mention, I appreciate John's prompting, that we thought it would be nice this year on the back of the program
I saw that.
to, to recognize a former, former Commissioner O'Brien, who was always such a strong advocate of, of veteran support and volunteers in general. So we had a little extra space, they said, who can we put there?
Definitely.
So that's who we got.
And send one to his daughter Cindy at the jail, so she'll be sure to see it because they, I do correspond mainly Cindy, I saw Frank recently too, but they're always, you know, supportive and appreciative of everything that's ever been done, as they always have, as the O'Brien family has been. So I know she'll get a boost out of it.
Excellent.
The daughter.
I will do that. So that, that's it.
Pay the most attention.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Robert about our annual awards banquet, so it's back to, to full, full-blown? I don't know if it's as big as it was, but
No, 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 we still work.
Grow back up again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in fact, it's a point of personal privilege. I've had the privilege of going the last few years and attending. It's always been an honor and it's a great job that you do, all the people do in hosting. I'm looking forward to having an indoors. And I want you to know that I will be there. I traveled, I have some travel plans I have to do on a personal matter, but I changed my plans so I could make sure I attend. So I'll be there, helping any way I can. Want me to speak, I'll speak, want me to give out pins? I'll be there and thank you for this wonderful bit of material here, it's going to be a great day.
You're very welcome, I'm glad you're going to be there. I hope, hope to see all of you there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Number five, public comment. Each week we have a session in our meeting and sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't. For anyone out in Zoom land or anyone that wants to have any public comment, now is the time. Director Cronin, have you heard from anyone?
No, sir.
Okay, last call for public comment. This concludes the matter. Number six, all business, I have none. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Four, I think they're all at the Aggie School.
They are.
Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir. For you, I move the following appointments for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. The first was notice appointment for Ashraf, Ashraf Minias of Foxborough as the school cook. 10 months of that contract and the effective date is 8/21/23. The second appointment at the Aggie is the, in the fiscal 24 budget, is for Isabel Bruno of Dedham as a 183-day instructor for the race stated, effective 8/28/23. The third is the appointment of Mario Franco of Walpole as a 183-day instructor. That also effective 8/28/23. And the fourth is the notice appointment of Edward B. O'Hart of Norfolk as the farm manager. We're looking for that for a while. That's effective 8/14/23. So I'll move that group as per for appointments at the Aggie School.
I wish I made a second, any comment? I have a brief comment on both the chef for the cook and then the, the manager of the farm manager. Just a shout out to the former cook Craig Bellows, who I know has been with us at least 10 years. He's leaving. Craig did a great job, he was easy to work with. Craig had a long time history of owning his own breakfast and lunch place in the city of Quincy for a number of years before he went to school. He's been, done a great job and I know his 10 years as a school kind of captain's career and he loved it very much, but he's retiring. And I wish I cooked well. And I might make a note that we're hiring a farm manager, talked briefly last week with John Wallace, the business manager. And they interviewed a number of people and they interviewed a Norfolk, Mass resident who's also a farmer in his closing, he's getting out of the farm business. He's also a Boston College graduate with credentials as an educator. And he's going to serve as the farm manager. And John told me that both Director Mon and John and other people have interviewed this man and said that he's got an extensive background. And they're looking forward, and I would think farm manager is one of our key positions there. We want to wish him well and wish the former farm, farm manager well, whatever hell the job he did. And these people are coming aboard in August, so they're getting ready to open school.
Yeah.
So with that, a motion made and seconded on these four appointments at the agricultural school, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number eight. We have another applicant for the vacation leave rule number one for approval. This is an applicant from a reg, is it a registry deeds employee?
It is.
Registry deeds employee had previous service. I believe from the Commonwealth before they came to registry deeds. This approval will award them five more days of vacation based on rules and regulations that people can carry some time from previous government service.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation of the HR Director for this matter.
Second, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, that is approved, thank you. Number 10, report on American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, the, the Opera Grant Portal currently has a number of grants that are cued at Stage Two. You should be seeing several of them in the next couple of weeks. There is one that has arrived at Level 3, which I expect you'll be seeing next week. It's for the town of Braintree, it's a little over a million dollars. So we continue to make progress on, on that. There is one grant that I'm going to be looking to get an update on because it's been languishing for a while. It's very large, it's for the town of Brooklyn, right? And it was a premium pay application, so we've got to follow up on that. Sizable grant for a sizable community. Other than that, things are just chugging along. We just submitted all of our year-end paperwork. I want to thank Assistant Treasurer, Joe Dioria, for his work on getting the report on behalf of the county, submitting it to 15 Larson for compliance under the federal guidelines.
Question, I thought we had Dover today, no?
Uh, yes, we have the town of Dover, I was going to do that.
Oh, it's next, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Shall I get right to it?
Okay, we're going to move right to today's opera award to the town of Dover for approval.
So Dover, I believe it's the second application, they've had some leadership changes, but this particular grant is timely for the town of Claybrook Road and Dover is located along the banks of the Charles River and has an unstable slope. There's been a partial collapse of the roadway in two locations, reducing traffic. As a result of an engineering study, the town has funded the work to fix this area along the Charles. That total cost is 1.85 million. The town has approved 1.75, so this funding closes the gap and allows them to move without delay on this critical project. So as I mentioned, I believe it's Dover's second award, 100,000.
Any questions, any comments, or anyone on broadcast today from the town of Dover?
They weren't able to make it.
Okay, that's fine.
I believe Commissioner Stady already made the motion to approve it, did you?
Not yet, no.
No, we haven't done it yet, that's why. It's next. When, when I, I skipped over it by mistake, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Back to number nine.
Is that?
Wrap it all together.
Is that Dover's second award?
I think it is.
Okay. Yeah, remember they were first?
That's right.
On, on some police radio, police communication?
Yeah, yeah.
And we were all, yeah.
Do you know how I'd number where we're at and how much we've given out? Are we over 80 million?
Oh, yes, we are.
We are.
Yeah, we're, we're close to 85 million.
Wow, okay. Wow, great job. Great job. I was speaking to the Canton Fire Chief, and it was not Dover, but happened to run into him, he was so excited and so grateful for those D5s and that we approved the money for. That was like a week ago.
And, and who's the new chief?
He's Wendell Robbery. Veteran, longtime veteran.
He wasn't, he was a deputy.
Yeah, and, no, actually, no, he wasn't, he was just a lieutenant, I believe.
Okay.
The deputy chief didn't want to
Oh, he didn't take it?
He was satisfied where he was for personal reasons. So Wendell is the new chief there and happened to run into him in the park.
Fine.
And he's very excited, very, very grateful, very grateful, so.
Okay, motion on the county Dover opera award and then we'll do the other awards.
Yeah. Move approval for the town of Dover for the opera award in the amount of $100,000. As outlined and presented by our director.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll finish opera and then we'll go back to payroll expense warrants. Any other opera questions for today?
No comments?
That is all. Can we do the regular warrant, please? I forgot.
All right. Do that now?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, yep. I'll move the following items on the warrant list of July 26th and move following for approval. Number one, there are six altogether. 24-3 parentheses 2.1, the payroll of the school, the amount of $213,699.27, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second is 24-3 payroll of the county. I'll move the amount of $168,007.16, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye. Third motion, 24-3 parentheses 2, payroll of the school, move the amount of $151,035.86, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Fourth, for Washington Recreation Facility sales tax for 7/29/23, the amount of $4,599.9, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Fifth, the expense for the county, 070424, the amount of $218,393.35, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And as already been on the warrant articles, 24-03, move approval of the opera for Dover, the amount of $100,000, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. This concludes the payroll expense warrants.
Yep.
We'll be right along. Number 12, bid openings, we have none. Number 13, contract awards, we have none. Number 14, report of the county director. Director Cronin.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Items for the commissioners. Next week on your agenda, you'll be asked to endorse another letter from the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. Yesterday I received a letter signed by the commissioner seeking the, the commissioners of Norfolk signature on a waiver letter as they attempt to purchase the McIntyre Building on McGrath Highway. This is the building that is adjacent to the Quincy District Court. And I believe the Commonwealth desires this property to be complimentary to their overall strategic plan. But pursuant to Chapter 7, I believe, the general laws, you will have to waive your interest in 120-day notice period. It's the same letter you signed back in March on the sale of Quincy. So as a butters, you're being asked to review this letter and endorse it. That letter will be in your packet for next week.
And you, you bought it as a general counsel?
Uh, did not. But it will, it will be to me too.
Yeah, I if it goes with the package, it goes with the package, I don't think.
We don't own the front. We don't own the front.
No. It's, it's that possible, as you look at the front and
Yeah.
down on the right, they, the, the court system was renting it and their probation was in there or parole or something, but it, it then became for sale about two years ago, Americor bought it. Strategic move and it's always been there, it's been there since the 50s.
But do we have a current lease? Are we leasing it, certainly?
No.
Okay, we have no.
The lease with pro, they parole and probation got out
I see.
about a year and a half ago because the principals of the McIntyre family daughter Elizabeth called me and I, they were concerned about the roof or anything. And as a favor, John McGowan did go up and look at the roofs, see if it was leaking or something, but no, we don't own it. And, but when you look at their package, it's, it's included in their package.
Yeah. I can make a motion if you want to expedite things, that we move to waive our 120-day.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh.
They can't vote on it.
I think you wanted us to make a motion.
It's going to be on the mix.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be on the mixer.
Well, if I was a suspicion, I have no problem doing it, but subject to that council review.
Yeah, I just want him to look.
Sorry about that.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. That's my thought. Okay, I didn't know if we owned the property, we don't own property.
Quincy, I had the checks in the bank, but I agree with what if they need it, I think we'll give it.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item.
Last week I received final write-ups for proposed grants on the Alzheimer's Association Program and Financial Literacy Program for the county treasurer. Mr. Bill Galvin, our consultant, brought those up after consulting with both stakeholders. They're being held pending the outcome of the Khabib Study on Dedham Superior and Dedham District Court. So they're ready to go, as soon as I know what those numbers are, we'll see how far they get. Wanted to announce through Sam Evans, who I know is in the room. He has begun one of two optimization teams associated with county technology. The first is the Tyler Optimization Team. Commissioners may recall that Tyler is the major vendor that oversee, runs our financial systems. We have over the years purchased various modules to help our workflow. This optimization team is made up of stakeholders, including treasurer's office, procurement, budget, and of course, technology, and they're going to point their energy in the direction of finding ways to take the product and make it more useful. The first priority is to look into purchasing and implementing a time and attendance system electronically that the county and its employees can use. I expect by the end of, well, sometime this fall, that our CIO, Sam Evans, will be delivering a report on sort of the way, waypoint on where this particular optimization team is going, as well as the other one, which is a Brown Tech Optimization Team that is in the process of being formed. I know Sam's reached out to the register with some questions to see if the register has any input. So before we move in that, but both are critical to the path ahead, planning our IT needs, and I just want to give the commissioners sense that Sam has begun that process and in one case is underway. And then finally, you may have forgotten this, but when we programmed our FY24 budget, we funded a modest amount of money to get into a bounded annual report book business. So something that was important to Commissioner Shea. Well, last several years we've done annual reports that are in paperback version. He desires us to return to a bound book style, so working with, under, excuse me, Assistant Director Buckley, we'll be sourcing all the material to pull together in FY21 and FY22 in a report, hopefully you'll see that in the coming months. Just a little project on the side. That is all I have, thank you.
In that, it's my intention, hopeful, I don't know much money the county director's given to the commissions, but I'm going to bind those meetings in the years that we stop mining them and it goes back into the 90s, there they are. And it, it makes it better, so we'll have a nice bound book.
If those, that's what we're trying to bind up.
Right. You notice how it's done up there? Yeah.
Like that.
Well, those, those are all, but they're bound and they're still in good shape.
That's what I'm saying. And the end result is something like that.
We're going to start and go back.
Right.
And that way.
Could I suggest something too, based on what we saw today?
We'll put it out to bed, there were only, my, my former life as a clerk, only two companies left. One's in Charlestown, one's down in
Southeastern, Fall River or something.
It's in Fall River, New Bedford, and they do all the town records, city and town records, business certificates, council orders. It's fairly inexpensive because I don't think we're going to, I'm not going to ask for them to be microfished or anything because some sound clerks also send everything out to be microfished, so they have it if anything should go wrong. Very expensive program, but the binding isn't too bad and I think it's a good place to start. Somewhere in the, maybe in the 80s, we stopped mining, I can't tell, but you know, you open one of those books, you take something out to copy it, you don't put it back, it's gone forever. Because it's loose and if you, you know. We have them, we don't want to get it to anywhere, so we'll have a, we'll get right on that and see what the, we can get the best price and in original fashion, we'll send it out. Send it out. And a year comes back, it's, it's, it's a nice bound. Gives the year and you know where you are, that's all.
Is there any way you could do something similar with the photos that you're discovering? Maybe digitize them or have
There's, there's all sorts of programs, that's another company.
Just to preserve them?
That's another couple of companies, one's in Wakefield, one's in, in Vermont, it's called Brown's River. Yeah, there's, there's many ways to do that and they, they do a great job. A lot of community, a lot of cities and towns that have community preservation funds have started during that and they're sending both of these companies, both are being used, lots of material and if you get into the photos and stuff, it gets a little more expensive, but they're, they're the technology is there, that's well, they're well into it. Even take what's in my office, these old threadbare books that you'll see like atlases
Yeah.
and the pages aren't together, I think you've seen the one that Patrick discovered in his office and brought it over here, it's in my office. They'll, you, you can send that out to them. And they, they scan it, they give you a disc of it, then they encapsulate it and give it back to you, all put back in order. One book is, I experienced $3,000 or $4,000 for one book, so. Technology's there, but we're going to start slowly by binding our minutes. But I'm, I'm, it's in the back of my mind and if I hadn't been a municipal clerk, I probably wouldn't have noticed it. Having lost a book or two of my career and I used to blame it on my predecessor. I can't, couldn't do that. And so we just, we're lucky enough to get some community preservation money. So let's start slowly. How much money did we appropriate for that?
I think it was $10,000.
They linked that $10,000 up very quickly doing those four.
So I have
That's all you have, anything else for the county director?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just a point on the record-keeping. I would, I would be remiss as a Providence College Masters of American History, almost as good as a a Stonehill College degree, but by Dominican historical education, we have been. I had to get in there, thank you. If the commissioners should know. We, we have been working with our neighbors next door[1678.86] We, we have been working with our neighbors next door, um, at the Historical Society. So we've also been making sure that they have copies of anything in the event the building burns down or something like that. They have, uh, all of the documents from the O'Brien dedication. They have copies of, uh, the programs there. They have copies of the programs from the courthouse dedication. They have copies of all the rooftop construction pictures as well. So as, as we do this process, we're also making sure we have additional, um, backup over there as well.
Do they have, uh, the history of Norfolk County by any chance?
They're, they're, they will get that soon. I think the, uh, uh, we may be working nights and weekends on a history of the Superior Court for them, uh, as well.
Very nice.
Okay, last call. Emergency items and topics the chair did not originally anticipate.
Not quite.
Anything else?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll make it brief. Uh, you know, we, we have pride in ourselves on being transparent, this board.
Absolutely.
And in trying to be, um, open and, and, uh, considerate. So I read with interest, uh, the email. I'm not sure if the board saw it, but I was copying on it from Marguerite, uh, who works at the registry and the correspondence with Michelle Lambardini. And I wanted to commend Michelle for her approach in terms of how she, uh, dealt with the follow-up of the issue that Marguerite had presented to us.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, probably I should forward that to you then. Um, the only thing is that I felt in the minutes, and maybe that was against something I should have brought to the board's attention. So I will take the hit on that. But I wasn't quite sure if I, my position had been correctly stated as regarded first. And I thought we had taken a position that said, uh, we've, we've ordered to endorse the present policy on vacation carryover. That was clear. But well, it actually was clear after we, after we looked at it, I mean, it was reverse vote. But what I had said and my intent was, I was troubled by the inability to put a figure on the days and how to equate that. I didn't understand the formula of how you would do that. And she had, she had claimed that she had extra work. She had done extra time. And so she come up with a number of eight, I believe it was, that she was looking for. And I didn't know if it should be six or five or some other way. So I wanted to stress again, we had said perhaps we'd look at that in some manner, perhaps in the fall and come up with some other way to, you know, make her whole. That's all. And I wasn't sure if Michelle understood that. Because Michelle, in reading the letter, it seemed like she just said basically, the commissioners voted this and this was the result. And I wanted to make sure for all the parties, we had, we had, I had my doubts at least. I voted, I did vote it. I did vote with the board on that. But I also had said that if there was some other way to treat that in fairness to her for the work she did during COVID, I was open to that. And that was
But we're still going to reconsider in the fall. We, we said
That's what I told me then.
All right, okay.
I wasn't sure if Michelle understood.
All right.
And that's what I'm trying to say. And maybe the minutes didn't reflect that either. So I mean, I didn't catch that and I should have caught that. But in the interest of being transparent and communicating, I wanted to make sure we knew that. Uh, we want to take a look at that in the fall.
Okay, sure.
But Michelle did a great job on her part.
We'll be happy to review the tape and, and get back to commissioners on exactly what was said.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. That was it.
Last call. I have nothing else. I have a motion adjourned, please.
All right, will be adjourned at one thirty-five.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be meeting in full session next week.
Oh.
Thank you.
I forgot. Uh, no, that's okay. That's fine.
And wait, sure, we can go back and
Well, just in fact, we have a, in August, we have a meeting scheduled for training.
On the sixth.
On the August sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
So we may need to consider either not meeting this Wednesday.
All right.
We need to look at that.
We'll figure it out and let everyone know next week.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.